It's Planning Commission meeting to order here at 4:00 PM on Monday, November 18th, 2019, in the first floor conference room. I'm going to go around the room and do introductions. Tom, if you want to start us off.
Tom Brye.
Dan Hanson.
Joe Terry.
Edita.
Zach Ruie, chairperson, who will go around the room.
Al Sushel.
Chad Markman.
Scott Kellogg.
Dex Conlon.
All right, great. Thank you all for being here. We'll move on to item number one on our agendas, the approval of the report from the October 7th Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner, for your wishes regarding that item.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Tao, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hanson to approve the report as presented. We'll move into a vote. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number two, maps and plaits received. Item B is Kathleen Jolene CSM. The applicant is requesting a certified survey map approval of the reconfiguration split one parcel and the combination of a portion of the split parcel into an adjoining parcel. The subject property is located at 72021st Avenue South. That is in our packets there. There we go, because I might double sign in this here. Joe, any comments, staff comments on this item?
No, so this one is pretty straightforward. We found that it meets, you know, meets our current zoning setbacks and everything seems fine. Right of way was fine, so staff's recommendation is to approve.
Commissioners, any special? A motion by Brye, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Tao. Any further discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item B is Steve Tillman Trust Extraterritorial CSM. The applicant is requesting a certified survey map approval of a parcel split in the town of Rudolph. The subject property is located at 1404 Stony Brook Road West. Jolene, staff comments on this?
Yeah, so this one is well. We didn't have any issues with this request. It is extraterritorial, and so staff's recommendation on this one is to approve.
Commissioners, any thoughts?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Hanson, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Tao. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item C, Lucas Eichinger Extraterritorial CSM. The applicant is requesting a certified survey map approval for a parcel split in the town of Grand Rapids. The subject property is located at 331048th Street North.
One moment.
Yep, hang on one second.
So is it typical to do townships outside of Rapid Center?
We have an extraterritorial review, so it's a certain amount of miles within this, from a city boundary, basically.
Good.
And I believe it's advisory, right?
It's...
The county sends them to us when they receive them.
I believe the city can deny. We generally have not. This one is one where the dedication of the right of way at 33 feet to center shows a 66-foot right of way. If, I guess the issue with that is if this area were ever to be annexed to the city, that right of way requirement is, instead of 33 feet from the center line, would be 40 feet from the center line. That's an 80-foot right of way on our master plan because it's the classification of the roadway. So in this case, staff's recommendation would be to, you know, approve the extraterritorial request, noting that if this property were ever to be annexed to the city, there'd be a requirement for an additional seven feet of right of way.
Great. Commissioners, do you want to, anybody want to make that motion to that effect?
Motion to approve with the conditions of the addition of the seven feet in the future.
Thanks. Motion by Hanson, is there a second?
So moved.
A second by Brye, any further discussion? If you've got none, we'll move into a vote. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item D, Catherine Roschaski CSM. The applicant is requesting a certified survey map approval for the combination of two parcels into one. Subject properties are located at 2420 Marie Circle and 2410 Marie Circle. Joe, staff?
Yeah, so staff review this request, the challenge with this request is that the outlot by itself creates a non-conforming lot. And so the staff recommendation is to approve the certified survey conditionally upon the outlot being combined with the, with the lot that the purchaser currently owns. By itself, outlot one is too small to be by itself.
In lot one, is this, this whole other area?
So this, the new property owner, or the property owner which is to purchase this outlot one is there.
What was the idea why the outlot would have, why they would have surveyed that outlot?
I think it's just a situation perhaps that maybe the neighbor was encroaching or, you know, wanted to do an outbuilding or something like that. And between the two parties, they, again, I'm speculating, that the parties wanted to, you know, one wanted to sell a small portion to another for various reasons. And this would accomplish that. The, you know, remainder of the lot is certainly large enough, it's just that outlot one by itself creates a problem.
Commissioners, any thoughts, comments? Or I entertain a motion on that item as well.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Hanson. Second, a second by Tao, is that with the contingency was from staff?
Yes.
Or the recommendation from staff? Any further discussion? Signal, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item two E, Robert Holt CSM. The applicant is requesting a certified survey map review for subject properties at 740 Oak Street and 1228th Streets.
Just in the staff review of this request, the recommendation at this time is to table this for a period of one month. There's some question that, that the engineering department wants to get clarified on the right of way. There, there's some inconsistency shown on this map. It's either 30 or 36 feet. We're not sure that that's accurate, that the right of way isn't actually centered, and that one side is 30 and the other side is 36. Additionally, 8th Street is required to be an 80-foot right of way. And so if it's 36, there needs to be a four-foot dedication accompanying this certified survey. There may be, there may need to be. And if it's 30, well, if it's 33, then obviously it's seven feet. The question comes in, and we're still, we're still trying to resolve that, and we're consulting with our city attorney, is because it's not resizing the lot, it's simply performing a certified survey if those right of way requirements would be a part of this request. And so with those unanswered questions, the staff recommendation is to table and bring it back at the December Planning Commission.
Commissioners, any other thoughts? Otherwise, we can entertain a motion to postpone that item.
I entertain a motion to postpone.
A motion by Tao to postpone, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Hanson. Further discussion? Signal, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right. Item two F is QuickTrip CSM. The applicant is requesting a certified survey map approval for the combination of two parcels into one. Subject properties, properties are located at 2520 West Grant Avenue, 25, 251, 25th Avenue North. Joe, with staff?
Yeah, so in the review of this certified survey request, there were no issues, and staff recommends approval.
Any comments? Or I entertain a motion? This is just on the CSM portion of that.
Just the CSM, correct. Make a motion to approve.
A motion by Tao, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Brye. Any discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And I don't believe there are any other maps or plaits received. Yes, we set them all on the agenda today. So that takes us to Plan 191042. QuickTrip Incorporated, the applicant requesting site architectural plan of operations review for proposed rebuild of a convenience store with an attached car wash, attached dumpster enclosure, auto fueling canopy, and diesel fueling canopy in the B2 General Commercial District. Subject property located at 2520 West Grant Avenue. The applicant is here to answer any questions. Is there anything in particular you want to talk through or present at this time?
No, I think the, one thing that we really kind of wanted to touch base with was there were some staff questions about landscape architect, and I mean, it's really going to match Lincoln Street, and we're going to, we'll work through all that.
Yes.
Through adding bushes, adding some trees, it's no problem for us. The sign was also in question because they're looking at redoing their sign ordinances currently, and I think are going to approve with them. So what we've agreed to do is work with those coming up sign ordinances. This will be at 20 feet max, and we would brick below that and make it, you know, more of a monument type sign, so it's just not a freestanding sign. So those really are the requirements. We're working through delineation with the wetlands. That was a manmade wetland for drainage on the side of the store as well. We should get those approvals this month. But other than that, this is really, really close to what you have over on Lincoln Street, besides the diesel fuel on the side and a little bit of extra parking, where the truck drivers can park, get out of the way, and come in and crush your shop, grab their vehicles, do whatever. So this is a really nice improvement. This will be our Gen 2 store, which is what Lincoln Street is as well. All brick, almost, almost identical to what you have on Lincoln Street. Pricers, message center, be a really nice location, be a really nice build for you guys, nice improvement over there.
Commissioners or staff? Joe?
Sure, so I'd just like to mention that, that staff met with QuickTrip and spent a few hours reviewing the plan and, you know, asking and answering a number of questions, reviewing the zoning code and, and compliance. Staff report is included. Everything seems to be relatively in order. And so there's a couple of conditions shown in your packet, and there's two other conditions that I'll recommend, and I'll walk through those real quick. Through the review of the landscape plan, so staff is recommending approval of this plan contingent upon the following. A thorough review of the landscape plan prepared by inside stated 10/4/2019, and any necessary adjustments to comply with Chapter 11.16, which is what the gentleman just discussed, that if, if that contingent item is approved, it allows staff to continue to work with QuickTrip without delaying their process and to reach compliance with the ordinance. Other item is that the driveway widths depicted in the proposed site plan shall be adjusted to comply with 11.06.65. This has been discussed with QuickTrip at our staff meeting and felt that that was, that wouldn't have any issues complying with that. Contingent upon the awarding of any necessary DNR and Army Corps wetland permitting. The approval of the associated CSM that the commission has just recommended. And then I've added two others, and that's relating to the next two items on the agenda, that the plans would be adjusted if necessary, consistent with the determination of the special exception Plan 191099 related to lighting. And plans adjusted only if necessary contingent upon the determination of the special exception to Plan 19-1044, which is related to a special exception for parking. But otherwise, the plans that QuickTrip proposed, you know, are compliant with our, our ordinances, and we're excited to see, staff is excited to see the project proposed.
Just from a point of clarification, I think the numbers that you referenced maybe are different than what the agenda saw, I think.
I'm sorry, 19-1044 is the, is the lighting.
Yep.
And 19-1070 is the parking.
Great. I think the staff report references Plan 18 to, just for everyone, everything is accurate besides just the headlight in that staff report. I'll go to commissioners now. Discussion commissioners. Obviously, the surface area, the square footage, I should say, for the entire lot accommodates all of the proposed uses pretty well. And I think, from our perspective, really cleans up, modernizes that corner. I think, as you mentioned, it's an old store and kind of an old footprint, and to have all the landscaping standards and parking standards met on that site would be a welcome improvement to that area.
Police and fire department also reviewed the plan, and we're pleased with the proposal.
That's going to make quite a change for that corner.
We're really pushing the store back. So that viewing triangle and the green space is going to be beautiful. I mean, there'll be stormwater ponds in our front, but we maintain those really well. So you're really coming off that corner with some green space and just welcoming more people, and we're going to have less confusion on in and out there. We're going to narrow up what would be access for your normal cars to fuel under the canopy, and then we're going to direct the truck traffic, you know, to the south and just have the truck have their own entrance and access to, to be able to go. So really, we'll clean that up and take a lot of confusion away from West Grant, I think, as we've looked at that. And the really nice thing is, really behind, is we'll be able to stay open while we build our new store behind it. And then when the store's built, we'll go take the store down and then bring the canopy to heights and be able to start fueling it anyway. So it's a really nice plan for us. As far as the lights go, we did talk to the neighbors. We talked to the landowner. She was okay with it, and telling them that at least the office space, we're excited to have more light. It's really not that much more light, it was less than one foot canopy. So it's, it seems like a lot, but it's really not. Our lighting's all 90-degree angle. We had a lot of discussion about lighting, where it's at, but if you were to talk to the police department, dimming any lighting is kind of a detriment to them. And then they can't, they can't see license plates, they can't see faces, they can't, you know, get a good read on that. And we have state-of-the-art cameras, we have 36 to 40 cameras in all of our stores, inside and outside. So the police department's really leaning on us, and if you were to ask them, Lincoln Street gets asked a lot of, of video footage, so, and we work really well with those folks. This is a really nice layout, if you'd be right. It's going to bring the standards up over there quite a bit.
Other questions or comments, commissioners?
No, I apologize for being late, but...
We got through the CSM business, so...
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah. Basically, this is just going where side roads used to stand, right? So it's just empty right now.
It is, yes.
Yeah. Well, good. Looking forward to it.
Yeah, is the alderman representing the very, probably your comments?
Yep.
From folks on the center of the store, just the traffic circulation and that is...
Yeah, it's a busy store, so...
Yeah. Yep. It's one of our top diesel areas, actually, in, in the central Wisconsin, so surprisingly, we're just going to, you know, we're going to direct those trucks in the right route now, instead of squeezing them in there and confusing it out on West Grant.
Right.
And we do, you can see in our sign plan, we really, you know, we try to direct people as much as possible. You're always going to have someone that's going to try to shoot out that truck lane, but, you know, truck exit only, you know, truck entrance only, and stuff like that. We try really hard to keep our bigger vehicles away from our smaller vehicles that are fueling under our normal canopy. I'm excited for it. Really nice upgrade. Our stores have, you know, as you go, if you are in our Lincoln store, we've rolled out chicken, we've rolled out take-home meals, we've rolled our meats out, and we can offer that in a smaller store. Hence the remodel and, and growth. So those things are going, and they go hand-in-hand with truck drivers, you know, construction workers that are fueling up underneath diesel canopies and stuff. So it's, it's more about getting all of our offerings and remodeling our older stores that we're able to remodel.
What's the schedule? I don't know if I asked that of her staff.
We would start in May. That's where we fall on our Gantt chart, and the hope would be early May to start the construction process behind.
Of the new store.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions, commissioners, on the cascade of items here related to this request?
Win for it to happen. You know, I knew, I knew it was going.
Yeah. Well, certainly with Wheeler's investment, just the Phase 2 just down the way that we approved not long ago, and all the new standards that'll be applied to there. And JR's listing the property across the street from, from this, or a corner from this property, so it'll be a great improvement to that corridor there. See no further discussion items. I entertain a motion to approve with the, at least item three, with the conditions of approval that staff recommend.
So moved.
A motion by Brye, is there a second?
Oh, second.
A second by Zerpu. Any further discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item four, Plan 191044. QuickTrip, the applicant is requesting a special exception to allow more lighting when needed to ensure public safety within the B2 General Commercial District. Subject property is located at 2520 West Grant Avenue. Joe, I already talked about this briefly. There's also a letter of support from the adjacent property owner within the packets pertaining to the really minimal lighting overspill. There are, you know, there are no conditions of approval beyond just the recommendation for approval. Otherwise, I entertain a motion on that.
Recommend approval.
A motion by Hanson, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Tao. Any discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item five, Plan 191070 Incorporated, the applicant is requesting a special exception to allow more parking within their rebuilds within the B2 General Commercial District. Subject property is located at 2520 West Grant Avenue.
So this may seem a little counterintuitive, but, but the city does have maximum amounts of parking allowed, and does have a special exception process. This particular facility, the applicant has, has demonstrated the need. They still meet all of their green space requirements, and they also clearly demonstrated business plan where they know how much parking they need to have and aren't asking for more than that. So the city's, the staff recommendation is to approve.
So are we talking long-term parking, or, I mean...
No, so your, your requirements are one stall every 300 square feet, so, and then a maximum of, I forget what it is, but we're 15 parking stalls over your maximum, so we have to ask for an exception to allow those 15 extra parking stalls. And it's not overnight parking, it's not, you know, any charging type station, long-term stuff. It's just simply we have the space for it, and we meet our green space requirement. And as we all know, our stores are pretty busy. It's nice to have the extra parking. A lot of times, we don't have enough parking because our stores are getting bigger, and it's hard to get parking. So this is a great problem to have for us.
The objective of the ordinance is so that, so that any business doesn't necessarily pave the world, right? And, and in this case, you know, and it's a special exception for a reason, so that it's reviewed and consideration given, and, and again, this, this situation, we believe it's warranted, and the, and the property owner believes it's warranted. And again, with all of the green space and stormwater management that's taking place on the property, I don't think there's anybody that would say, when you look at the final plan, that there's too much parking, you know, that it's overdone, so...
Yeah, most times, it's a case where 25 is the minimum, and you come up with 23.
Right.
Where do you get the extra two? It isn't fair.
Right.
There is no green space now, really, so...
Right.
Obviously, that, the rendering is pretty impressive.
If there's any complaints, at QuickTrip, most of the time, it's not enough parking.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion by Zerpu, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Tao to approve as presented. No additions, conditions of approval, so straight from request. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Thank you for the presentation and for being here tonight, working with staff on that.
Yes, thank you. You guys are wonderful. You're easy to work with.
All right. I'd like to hear that.
Yes.
When it's true.
Yeah, yeah.
It is true. You're one of the Madison's of the world.
Oh, boy. I command them.
Out of curiosity, when you, in the letter, it says 25 to 35, and the new store footprints, what is the employment change between the old generation and the new generation?
Employment change? I would say this store probably staffs 20 to 23 full-time and 8 to 10 part-time. We'll go to 35 to 40 full-time and probably stay around 8 to 10 part-time there.
Okay. Just curious, I know there's, I see a lot more lines of business in the stores, and just curious.
Yeah, just the size of the store. This is, we're graduated to a Gen 3 store from that, which is another 900 square feet, but the side diesel takes two people probably per day just to keep an eye on it, keep it clean, keep it rolling. As you know, our pumps, our pumps are wiped down every day, and they're not, there's no dust on top of them, and the garbage is always picked up. The stormwater ponding will take someone, you know, two part-time employees will look after stormwater ponding, make sure there's no garbage in there, and, you know, floating toys, anything that's got, that somebody wants to throw out the window. You know, the bags get blown away, and people are emptying their garbage, and it's exonerating. Stormwater ponding management is probably a full-time job for somebody, because it's green space, just because when they start getting cluttered up, you get a lot of complaints. Oh, man, these things floating in there, you know. That's not good for stormers when Dunseyville gets a call that there's too much garbage in a stormwater pond. So just overall maintenance, there's a lot of concrete, there's a lot of sweeping, there's, you know, there's a lot of things. The truck parking in the back to make sure that there's not overnight drops, you know, or somebody just disconnects and just drives away without telling somebody or asking or anything like that. Someone to manage that, make phone calls, whose truck is it? You know, is it our truck? Is it somebody else's truck? So we really, there's a lot of moving parts. Our chicken, it'll take probably three people on our fryers just for our take-home meal chicken that never leaves the kitchen all day long, as it goes. It's some intense, you know, keeping the coolers stocked, keeping, we don't have the Pepsi's, the Coke's of the world stocked. We do all of our own, just delivery in the store, store manages all. We get delivery every day, everything's fresh every day, fuels every day. We get delivery every day, everything's fresh every day, fuels every day. Um, but there's a lot of people that it takes to go in there. It amazes me, you know, I mean, it's an 8,000, 8,500 square foot building, but most of the time, there's, I think, three to four shifts that come in there full-time.
Interesting.
So hoping maybe one more store in your town will kind of match this far out.
Yeah. Thanks so much.
You bet. With you guys.
Move on to item number six, Plan 190938, Community Development. The proposed new sign ordinance, Chapter 46 of the Minnesota Code, is previously recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, but the common council referred the ordinance back to the Planning Commission for further discussion. The Community Development Department is requesting adoption of the new sign ordinance. So anticipation of this item coming back before us, I ask council members to give some consideration to what are the areas, given that we spent a bit of time going through the ordinance, that would require, or they feel would require additional review. Alderman Scott Kellogg is here and had dropped off something with me, and Scott, if you want to start off the discussion, maybe walk us through your areas that...
I made a copy of the ordinance and my notes, so it's easier to follow along. Basically, I'm excited about the ordinance. I think it's probably all long overdue. And so when I went through, I just made some comments. On the front, I just was excited about the aesthetic environment and then restricting off premises, uh, signage. In turn, page six, that's just past the definitions. Things that are prohibited, yeah, it was mentioned, vehicle signs, I guess, oh, sorry. What do you mean by that? I mean, I know many trucks and people having signs, plumbers or what have you, having signs on their trucks. What do you mean by vehicle signs? It just seems unusual to have that.
So I believe that's more of a, um, a trailer or a van, its purpose is not to be a vehicle, but just an advertising sign.
I wonder, see, that should be explained that way, you know?
Is vehicle signs...
Vehicle signs, it is defined under the definition, a trailer, a vehicle...
Vehicle sign means a sign mounted, painted, or otherwise placed on a truck, a trailer, truck, automobile, or other vehicle which are parked in a public right-of-way or private property so as to be visible from the right-of-way. However, this does not include signs attached to vehicles and trailers such as lettering on motor vehicles where the sign is incidental to the primary use of the vehicle or trailer. Does that address your question, Scott?
I guess my, how I interpreted that was like, I think Steve's plumbing, like when you drive past the expressway, I think that type of sign would be good because he's advertising like on his vehicles, but the vehicles are used. But if like, uh, plays on a corner where to park a vehicle, like, like they're advertising the business rather than just having it on the vehicle that's like parking it, you know, the vehicle could be like an obstruction almost. That's how, and maybe I'm...
I think the example, that was a towing company at Eighth and Chestnut, had an old-fashioned car there for a while, and said, "Somebody's towing business,"
Yeah.
and it was a vehicle sign, right? The vehicle was clearly not in service, or if it was, it was very casually in service. So I think that would be, I should have...
Yeah, the difference.
All right. Does that clarify the concern on the explanation?
Yeah. Inflatable devices. Sometimes you get the sales where they have the something...
The baby guy?
Or something else. Is that the case, that the, you won't be able to do that, or...
Correct. Yeah, by the definition, yeah, right. It means an object that's inflated with air or gas utilized to attract attention to a business activity being conducted. So you're correct in that those would be, under the current proposed ordinance, would be...
Yeah. I don't mind, but I wonder if you're gonna get pushback on that. It clutters, and it's up there a long time for say, you know, it does clutter up the area, but just wonder, you might get pushback possibly.
Well, I think one of the issues with those types of signs and, and I think one of the reasons why our, our, um, our animated sign boards are allowed as they are, is that a lot of movement, things like that distract the driver, right? And so trying to avoid that from being a problem.
Okay.
So it's a safety issue.
Off-premise premises signs, what's that?
Uh, the definition states that means a sign, including a billboard, which advertises goods, products, facilities, or services not necessarily located on the premises or directs persons to a different location from where the sign is located. Athletic field signs shall not be considered off-premises signs.
So you can't have a sign away from your store representing your store?
If, if a commercial business on a corner had signed space, they couldn't use it to say, you know, Joe's Plumbing, two blocks.
Okay. Well, the next one, um, signs located within the public right-of-way easement of the city property unless otherwise it is specifically approved by the common council. What about the signs? What bothers me sometimes are the signs near our entrance signs. They're up there for a long time, and then you get one, two, or three, and they're not taken down. It looks, so you see a beautiful $10,000 entrance sign that we just purchased, and then you see all these other signs up around. And I know people want publicity for a run or something like that, but, um, are we going to allow that? I hope not, in a sense.
I don't think those signs were ever allowed.
Like I saw...
It was just a matter that we weren't enforcing it, but...
There's coming, one coming in from Nacusa, there's a sign there, so...
But this would state, as you say, it would disallow, would not prohibit those signs, and as Sue said, they have not been allowed present or to date. It's just the enforcement is probably, or keeping up with the, the turnstile of events that continue to pop up there.
Okay.
I know on some of the entrance signs, there have been, there's been a sign that says, you know, no signs, like no banners, like on the corner of the Chestnut by the skate park.
And she's the same group year after year, so once they're informed and take their signs now.
Well, the idea was to create the overhead sign, signage to allow that now as a means to, for these companies to advertise their events, yeah, in a consistent way that, so we've allowed that now, it's just, you know, many have taken advantage of that.
I was just, uh, number five, stand pipe. What's attached to a stand pipe or fire escape?
Stand pipe's like a water tower, private or public, right? So if you've got a, if you've got a building and, uh, and maybe your water pressure isn't sufficient, so on top of the building, you've got a small tank up there, that's a stand pipe.
Okay. Um, the next one with regard to, uh, can't paint, uh, paint on rocks. I, I think you mean boulders, not rocks, and then why not? I mean, I think sometimes I've seen cities where they have a boulder in front of a high school, and the kids, each graduating class would paint on that, or, I mean, are you, is that that important to say you're not going to have, be able to paint? And then you have rocks, so what's wrong with painting rocks? So, I, I mean, I think, I think it's in there, and it's not necessary to be in there, but...
Well, I think you can, like, that, it was going around Facebook for a while, where they'd paint rocks, they'd paint them, and that's not signage, in my opinion.
Right.
So that, that actually is not prohibited by, or wouldn't be, but the boulder thing would be, uh, there's one out by Rudolph, you see all the time, too.
So you can, can prevent that?
Right.
Okay.
I think you're right, that the intent is, or the spirit of that is boulders large enough to have a sign on it, but where is the definition of what would constitute a, you know, there's a question of art versus sign, right? You know, if it's commercial, I think that's probably what Joe was being, from the distinction, you know, from free speech versus, um, commercial sign, or not necessarily even just commercial, but signage. Where would that...
Well, the definition of sign, I mean, has to direct to a product, service, site, activity, person, institution, business. I mean, if a, if a business had a bunch of boulders and they're parking them up, you know, they couldn't paint those for, you know, those whatever.
Put a mural on it or something.
Yeah.
But you could paint them white, say you have a, you want...
That would be a sign, yeah.
You want, you don't want somebody to cross it if you paint it white, so you see them then.
It's only if there's, be a kind of a commercial message or directing a product or...
Okay. So you're gonna keep rocks rather than boulders? Or not?
Well, I think, I think every boulder's a rock, but not a rock's a boulder.
How big is a boulder?
Yeah, I don't know.
But like Sue said, it's gotta also meet the definition of a sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Next one, on the next page, on the fourth, there shall be no transition between messages, no traveling, scrolling, or dissolving, or fading. How do you go between messages if you don't dissolve them and fade them?
You just stick it out, and then at least it doesn't go, go on to the next message. You have one message, and then it's done, and you have another message, and it's done. You don't...
So basically, no graphics or animations.
Do you have any concern about that?
A lot, yeah. I mean, after, you know, investing nearly $40,000 in a sign that had that capacity, and I think if you've been by our, our building, you know, it's all tastefully done, and, uh, you know, we don't have any flashing lights or that type of thing, but, and sometimes the transitioning is something that adds an aesthetic value, not a distraction. And, and I guess, Joe, to something that you brought up, you know, earlier, you know, we're not gonna want to do anything that's going to, you know, uh, be threatening, you know, to a morbidous, that's gonna, you know, cause that level of distraction. But I, my, my concern is not only with the ability to have the dissolving or the fading, because sometimes that's appropriate. I'll give you, for instance, um, we do a lot with community events, United Way just to mention one, but fundraisers for groups that are trying to raise money for benefits and that type of thing. And oftentimes, that message won't fit on one board, and so it may be, you know, a benefit for, um, let's say it's, um, benefit for Ally, okay? Well, that's all you're gonna have on there. You don't want to have a bunch of stuff on there because people can't consume it in the, in the time that they're going by. But then we fade into the next one that says, "On Sunday, starting at, you know, 1:00 P.M." Well, if we, if we live the way the study proposed and had a seven-second restriction, I timed it today, if somebody was gonna be going from intersection of Eighth and Peach, which is where our building is, seven seconds, they'd be past Valley Community Bank. You know, they're not even gonna see that second, you know, slide that's there. And so I see the purpose behind, you know, having a sign ordinance that, uh, is going to improve the aesthetics and, and give some guides, but I think when you get into this level of detail, you're restricting, you know, businesses from being able to make a connection, you know, with potential customers. And also even just the example that I gave for, um, the things that we're, we're trying to promote in the community.
And I'm just looking up our current sign ordinance, the sign that JR's talking about was permitted by the city, right, in 2017 or something, did I say, when I looked up the history? And it would have been approved under our current sign code. And so JR, in an offline conversation, talked about potentially reconciling those, those, because we would be potentially creating yet another threshold for which, now his would be grandfathered, right, because his sign's already been permitted, but I don't know to what extent...
Well, but the, but it's, but what did, weren't these already added into the CUPs that were given for previous signs, with the static message and...
His was not a conditional use in the history that we looked up.
It was not?
It was not. It was an actual permit. And I think it was because the standards were changed, were they changed by the commission and the council? And I don't remember which sign was the one that provoked that. I'm assuming it preceded JR's sign.
So what does your permit say in terms of your message?
I didn't pull my permit, but I, I know that everything that we're currently doing was allowed, and, um, I could have gotten a much less expensive sign if, if it was going to have these type of limitations, you know, and we, uh, we intentionally, because I mean, you know, our business is to connect with potential homeowners and, and home sellers, and so we need to be able to have some of those graphics, um, as opposed to something that's just specific to it being static.
But the, but you realize that the sign ordinance is about, is not about, I mean, I don't think the top priority is the ability of the, the property owner to get their message out and get as many ads in, and whatever, you have to temper that with people that are driving and that are staring and wanting to look at the beautiful home that you have, where if they could go to your website, they could, whatever. I mean, I think the main medium for your people is your television show, your, and so I, you know, I mean, I guess I, I think you, I think this is all about the public safety and the distraction and, um, but, I mean, obviously, I understand, I see your signs, and they're nice, but, you know, that has to be tempered with, so...
And I, and I think, I think striking a balance, you know, is something that, that is important, and, uh, part, part of that balance is, is attracting business to our community, is, you know, the restrictions here is, you know, it going dark from 11:00 to 7:00, and we have a community that has a lot of shift workers, and, uh, not a 7:00, I'm sorry, 11:00 to 5:00 A.M. And, uh, that, you know, we're in a commercial district, we're not in a residential neighborhood, and, uh, we're on the main, one of the main corridors coming through our, our community. And, so going back to striking that balance, you don't want to do anything that's going to be, um, so oppressive that it ends up, you know, reducing businesses being able to do what they maybe could do in the community. And so I see there's gotta be a balance in that, and I'm just asking for consideration, and not just for my sign. I'm not here on any official capacity of all the businesses in Wisconsin Rapids, but that there be, you know, that it be tempered a little bit. And from the distraction standpoint, and I, I'd be glad to share a follow-up email, you know, with this, but, um, I was able to find a study that was done, it was a statistical analysis on the relationship between on-premises digital signage and traffic safety, and this one wasn't done by a sign company, it was done out of Texas A&amp;M University by a professor in civil engineering. And the short version, all the details are in here, is there was not a relationship between increased traffic and accidents or traffic safety as a result of it. And they, they looked at, you know, 3,000 possible sites, they actually pulled in data from the highway safety information, and then compared that accident rate and took into consideration lanes, speeds, other factors, and one of them, the closest Midwest one was Ohio, but it was done in several states across the country. So, um, there hasn't been any increased accidents out in front of ours, you know, in the last two years as a result of it. And not that that's a study, but I, I think some of the things that are in this proposed ordinance are, are too onerous for businesses that are in a business location. So I appreciate you asking for...
Mr. Chipper's?
Yes, Joe, go ahead.
You know, I would...
You know, I would suggest that, you know, dissolving or fading might be appropriate, but certainly not the traveling or scrolling. I mean, those are distractions. You're, you're, you're looking at the sign, waiting to see what's next, and, and not the road. The other issue with, with turning off the signs, you know, it's, it's customary, at least traditional, that most businesses, at the end of the business day, turn the lights off. The sign's turned off. It, it, you know, it gives the potential customer and the traveling public an idea whether the business is open or closed. You know, if, if the business is open twenty-four seven, they can run their sign twenty-four seven. But, but I do think it's reasonable that, you know, that if there's an electronic display that is turned off after they're closed. You know, and if they're closed at five, they can still run it till eleven P.M. each day. If they close at two, they could run it till three A.M., right? I mean, it's, there's, there is some flexibility there. But I think it is a bit much to expect or to allow signs to be lit and operating, you know, if the business isn't functioning as a business at that time of day.
And I may have found our clarification that I did not find when I was doing the research in our permit database. It said that it was a permit, and there was no reference to conditional use. I actually found the conditional use now from February of two thousand sixteen. And it was when the request, in this case, JR's particular request, I was just gonna see if there was specific conditions that again would, would line up to this. The ordinance changes here in terms of what the conditions be. Grand Law One Animated Sign, Animated Sign Not To Exceed Thirty-Something Square Feet in Sign Area. Future maintenance and/or replacement of the sign. The Electric Message Center shall not contain flashy or animated messages. In particular, the sign shall not mimic lights on public CTV vehicles.
And I understood.
Messages not included in the background design shall not change more often than every five seconds. So that's the, what was originally approved with, with this one. And I believe the others that were approved around this time probably were consistent. Just point of context for what's in here proposed and what was already before the city considered. So it was a conditional use. That, that was my recollection. When JR spoke on the phone, I thought that was, and I couldn't find it. So I'm gonna have to search for it. So, go ahead, Joe, you were gonna say something?
Well, I guess, I mean, they're already, the lighting levels already have to become reduced, like, after sunset if there's, you know, limited ambient lighting.
And they are.
And they are. So, so I guess, why would they necessarily have to turn it off? I mean, especially between eleven and five. I mean, I think it's not a whole lot of traffic anyway. But I mean-
And I think a compromise might be that we think about, since this does not govern which business or district, zoning districts, those particular signs are allowed. And I don't know where we can and can't provide that specificity, but perhaps there's something to be said about somebody wanting to pull into these interresidential or a different zoning district that's not B2, which are your general commercial corridors. I don't know. That's just a thought, too, because we haven't restricted the hours of operation before.
Well, it kind of doubles advocate. Let's say, you know, QuickTrip's open all night. Maybe a peating gas station is not, so they have to turn their sign off, but QuickTrip will keep theirs on. You know?
But if you're driving by-
Well, you're not gonna stop at the one that's closed, but, you know, maybe you'll get-
How do you know if it's closed if the lights are on?
Well, I, I, I mean, generally they have an open sign or the interior lights, but I'm thinking more like a message board that's usually out by the road, which I think is your case, right?
Correct, yeah.
So, 'cause I see the picture, like, Joe, the picture of a home is sometimes, and those seem to be static.
They are, but sometimes it'll transition into a, you know, another home or another part of the home. And, and then we'll use the distinction if it's gonna be a different home, then it does just, you know, go away and a new one pops up. But if we've got, you know, multiples for that home, it makes more sense to transition, you know.
But I think you've seen some, some animated signs where the transition is quite an animation. It's not, it's not just simply going from one photo in a one-second or half a second transition to the next photo. You know, it's got, you know, some, some type of animation is part of the transition. It spins. It, you know, a checkerboard's in and out. It's not, it's not just a fade-in, fade-out type of transition either, you know, where the transition itself could be quite animated.
And I, I understand, you know, what you're talking about there, Joe, especially if it's anything that's flashy, you know, but here again, I would just ask that the Planning Commission consider not getting so, you know, much into those details that you restrict any type of creativity, you know, so that we're not trying to sort out what's fading and what's, you know, you know, crackling, you know, right? And I think flashing, you know, would be something that you don't want to have because that, that can be extremely distracting to a driver.
Right, but a transition also, I mean, is a wipe, you know, things that come in from four corners. It's, it's, you know, it's movement.
Which I would ask that you still allow that because we are in a business district. That, that not become so restrictive.
Yeah, I think, I think that conflicts with the animation, just that vision of it's a lit sign, but it's not animated. If the transition becomes part of the animation, then you're allowing animation. And I could see where the dissolving or fading might be accepted, but, but there's, you know, a plethora of other types of transitions that exist besides a dissolve or fade.
I have a question for our city attorney. If there's a conditional use that's been granted to allow certain things within certain parameters, how does the adoption of a new sign code affect that conditional use?
I was just reading here-
We can come back to that, too, if you wanna take a look at that. I think the other piece that I would recommend the commission consider is taking a look at that second, the amount of seconds, you know, the five seems something we've been able, that's reasonable and something we've proved before, and perhaps that would be something we would wanna count for in number two, B2. And then number seven again being that these have to turn off at a certain time of the day. I'm not sure. I mean, in ideal world, the business lights would turn off and, you know, you go past a big chain, big box store and they're closed, home people, for example. Everything's off when they're closed, right? And I think in an ideal world you would have that, but in, in reality, it's probably unrealistic to expect, I don't know, I guess we can decide whatever we want and say they have to be shut off, but I think there's probably some reasonable risk to having those signs on.
Well, that could be a-
But that's just me.
Yeah, I mean, what if they wanna advertise something for like the next day or two days? You know, like, you know, free coffee Sundays or something, you know?
Yeah, and I think from the transition piece, if there's a trade-off, you know, I would rather have them on and less obtrusive and less flashy and all those pieces from a distraction standpoint than having them have to be off after certain hours if we're thinking if there's a distraction important to it.
I mean, I guess that would be considered a non-conforming. You could argue it's a non-conforming sign because it doesn't, I mean, I would argue that the sign itself is not non-conforming because it can easily be, it has all these abilities to do all these different things, and it was, so the sign itself is not non-conforming. But I think we would, if the permit was issued and said, "This sign is allowed to do certain things," then I think we'd consider that to be a non-conforming sign and that it's allowed to continue even with the code change.
Anything else on that section, commissioners, or Scott, I guess it's-
Well, I just, I guess you can forget about it in a sense, but it's pretty, you can, it's hard. What about free speech? You put up a sign and it says it has to be connected with the premises, but the location, but there might be something up there that the person wants to share. And are we going to say, "No, you can't"? Who says that? But it's just food for thought.
It's a commercial.
We can regulate, yeah, the commercial. I think that's where that debate came in. And you may not have been here for all of these, but the supplemental signage under forty-six, page eleven, talked about the free speech allowance, basically. If I remember that discussion right.
And then where it says on number one on the bottom, the scale portion and architectural style. I like that, but who determines that? Who, how do you, what group, this group determines that and what determines that recommendation? You know, it's just interesting. I, I put it in a couple spots throughout, just, but-
So I think your, your planning and economic development director would make that determination. And then there's an administrative appeals procedure if, and Sue could probably correct me if I'm wrong. Administrative appeals procedure if, if someone feels that, that a department head's interpretation of the ordinances isn't correct.
And then it would come here?
I think, well, that would go to general, the administrative appeals, zoning board appeals. I'm not sure if there's a specific code to this sign. Could you change that?
We talked about it, unless I think it was the zoning code or we talked about the appeals process.
Yeah, appeals to the zoning board appeals.
All right.
And I, and I guess that language is covered the same when the permission decides, you know, site plan reviews and, I mean, it's a form-based code, so it's kind of, you know, not necessarily everything is defined, but, but I, I think it's a pretty common exercise that they don't make to make sure that it's, you know, the styles. For instance, in the building garage, the garage has to be at the same style.
I would just consider, I was concerned about that process. I think it's good to have it in there, but just the process, who does it and how is it? If it's clear to everybody else, it's nice.
Yeah, so forty-six point oh seven describes the community development department is the enforcing officer, and it lists their duties. And then forty-six point one one lists the administrative appeal process.
All right. And then on the next page, it talked about awnings, the vertical flap. What, they said you could put a sign on the horizontal flap, but you can't put one on the vertical flap? Is that in the front or is that on the sides of the awning? What's, what's the vertical flap?
That, it could be either the front or the side, but that's what hangs down below the, the tension part? That vertical drapery?
That top part?
Well, you've got the top part that's taut, right, between the building and, and your cantilever.
Right, and you got-
And then you've got that little decorative skirt.
And that's horizontal. You can put it on there. No.
That's, that's what, oh, only on the vertical flap.
Right.
Right.
And so you, you can't put it-
On the awning itself.
Side.
Yeah, you can't put it there. Or you can't put it below you, you know, where it comes down.
Right.
You can't put it below that.
Well, that's where you can.
That's where you can.
And you can't only put it on going down, right?
No.
Cannot put it on going down, is that what you're saying, by the way, it's-
On the, on the portion, you know, the, the tension piece that's, that's from the building out to the cantilever?
Yep.
That, that slope piece, with this language, you would not be able to put, you know, Eat It, Joe's on the awning, but you could have it on the, on the skirt, that vertical portion that hangs down, right?
And you can't have it, okay, here's the skirt, and here it comes down. You can't have it up here either.
And why? I can't ask that question.
No.
I can't ask that question.
Aesthetics?
Yeah, I think aesthetics, it's-
Maybe it could be different colors and I, I think it's pretty common.
Yeah, and I think this is consistent with, you know, we had a consultant assist us with this. It's consistent with most municipalities in their sign ordinance.
I'd like to see, see some compare. I'm trying to think of existence. I've seen some probably on the, on the face of trouble is they don't weather well, right? Because that's what bears the sun, bears the water, it bears the snow versus the, the vertical portion of the flap.
It's probably cleaner going across and not, you know.
But a lot of, a lot of businesses, if you go to other communities, whether it's, you know, whether it's a Starbucks or whether it's a, you know, Joe's Bar and Grill or whatever, that's where they'll put their logo on that, on that section, you know, up there. That's, you know, part of their branding. I mean, isn't, when the Dunkin' Donuts, do they have a, do they have a, an awning on theirs?
I'm not sure if it's an awning where there's, I know where you're talking. I can't remember if that's an awning or if that's actually a sign. That might be, yes.
Yeah, but anyways, you see a lot of that. I think even, I was thinking, even in-
This is okay.
There is Madison where, where the restrictions are probably even greater.
Yeah.
So here's some examples. So the Roly-Poly sandwiches, that's a vertical part of that awning.
Well, what about the purple one down the middle?
Yeah.
Yep.
You can't have that.
I mean, that, that's very tasteful.
This, this insomnia, you know, insomnia cookies, that's, that's on the vertical portion.
But the one in the middle.
No, to your right.
Well, either one of those, really.
No, this one too. You know, you've got, you've got part of it's on the vertical and part of it's-
Look at the, look at the yellow one there. I mean, I mean, that's-
This is, this is vertical here.
Yeah.
And this one is as well. It's rounded top and then vertical.
So you have to assign your awning almost.
Yeah, yeah, I mean-
I guess when to, when to count as signage square foot for the business too, right? Because it's-
Right.
The signage square foot for a business is, is decided based upon what the, the front area of, of-
Building.
The building. So if they already have a sign in front, then that's-
They may not be able to-
They may not be able to put anything on the awning.
Right, they'd be restricted by that. Otherwise, it'd be like having another sign on the property.
Yeah.
Can this be under the clause we just talked about, who determines it? You know, I mean, you know, like, like we just talked about the scale and, and size and so forth. Can that be, it comes to the spartan?
Yeah, that's in the ordinance.
I know, but could this statement, which we carried a vertical and horizontal, awning has the, and so you could have one on the, on the vertical part.
If it's vertical.
And you can have one on the horizontal?
Is it really-
But you can have it if it's forty-five degree based on the proposed ordinance.
Right. So obviously there's no, there's no public safety issue with this. Is it just an aesthetic thing?
I think aesthetics and longevity.
And I think a compromise could be because we restrict the percentage of the area that it can be consumed.
Yeah.
You've got some measure of protection there that you're not going to see the M with the pizza or whatever that, whatever that icon is to the next, to the right of that M.
Right, it's too much.
And the purple one too, you know, that's more than fifty percent, right? It's probably more along the lines of that yellow one to the left, wherever that says salon cuts. So whereas that's closer to probably that fifty percent area. That could go either way, right? If you want really a clean look, you see a lot of clean new developments that are architecturally solid, you know, from an aesthetic perspective. They don't allow text. In fact, the Starbucks and that, you see it generally right at the bottom. Or even the Mead Witter Building, right down the street here, you know, there's text on the vertical flap of those, the fringe or whatever on the awnings. I can see, you know, either going either way. I think it's a good consideration, right? I think it's a good consideration, right? Because people are going to assumably ask for or expect that they're going to be able to put their text on their awning.
Yeah, I think, but you mentioned logo like Starbucks and others.
Right, and sometimes it's just the logo, you know, it's part of their branding, but it would be considered signage in the ordinance as you're looking at it.
Commissioners, are there thoughts on what's reasonable there?
I was gonna ask a question if I could. So I'm writing down some changes I would like to propose, but do you want to handle them all together?
I think we would. I mean, I'm just kind of marking up my copy and then I was gonna go through it as we... So if you've got...
Well, I was just gonna...
Keep them, that's fine.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. Wall signs, forty-six point one-nine, Scott had... I was saying, I think you're...
No, generally, that's the same.
Talked about the other...
And then, oh, this one, where it says sidewalk signs shall not have other attraction getting devices such as balloons and ribbons and so forth. But what about... I think it should be like grand openings. If you're not gonna do it here, what about grand... One minute, we can't have these men flying around and then now we're talking about you can't have on sidewalk signs, but what about the legs that when you have a grand opening or balloons? To me, why not? But it's just something to clarify, that's all. I mean...
Were we just talking about that last time where we would make exception for one-time use or short-term signage or grand openings or stuff?
So sidewalk sign is different, though.
Aren't they? Well, they put them out daily almost, right?
Right, out in the public right of way or out on the sidewalk?
So the idea that you can't put balloons there or ribbons, but you can put balloons and ribbons.
On your front door or...
On grand openings or something.
Would it make sense to have the right-of-way occupancy permit indicate guidance as to when that's... At number nine at the bottom, they have to come and get a right-of-way occupancy permit from the city or from the engineering department? We might consider putting in a provision in there where you could be somewhat flexible to those, to allow them on limited occasions, but I think you're right.
I don't know if you'd want it out on the right of way at all.
No.
You know, because someone gets tangled up in it or...
Sure.
You know, it's one thing if you're attaching it to your building on your own property. You're gonna put them on your own sign on the building because it's a grand opening. But if it's out in the public right of way, there's some safety, you know...
Yeah, I'm thinking of the true sidewalk sign, but you're right. There are areas when sidewalk signs are in the... I mean, they're in the right of way. They're in public space. You're on a sidewalk or adjacent to a vision triangle or something.
Well, yeah, like traffic, because it could... I mean, the pillar in your own car is bad enough sometimes.
Yeah.
Because they'll put them on corners.
Yep.
Well, if you go... I don't know if you go on the next one on page ten, number five. One, it says here, signs not requiring a permit and time limitations none. And before we were talking about signs, if businesses close at eleven, we have to turn it off.
I think that's referring to item A, signage for a property zone for a single family use, so residential signage, right? So there's no limitation on the signage of that.
Okay, so it goes back to the...
Yeah, right above it.
And...
It's not really formatted like, but in that, so it's kind of hard to see that.
I don't know what I meant by number seven, static display. And quasi-political at the bottom, signage, signage on non-scene or non-commercial event or celebration in a community that is sponsored by a civic or educational and so forth. That's not...
Would be allowed.
That is allowed.
That is allowed.
It's an example.
What number was that?
Number ten on the bottom.
On page ten, forty-six point two-two, down at the bottom, number ten.
Is there any question about how long the signs can be up?
Private residents, definitely.
Your own.
Yeah. I said private, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, your own.
Because I thought they had to be taken down.
So that's one of the things that was talked about at the commission level was that free speech component.
Yeah.
That, you know, we'll call it an election sign, but we really can't control the free speech element.
Yeah.
So, and apparently, according to our consultant, those things have been challenged.
Yeah, I imagine.
And found that there's a free speech component there. So we can't limit signs based on the content for this type of free speech sign.
Okay. That's it. Good questions. Good considerations. There, I was just gonna figure out...
Yeah, I did, I wish to follow up on something that Scott brought up and that you guys were talking about. We've never used any of those inflatables, but I think of a business like Sherrill Tire Center, okay? I mean, that's probably a big part of their marketing, you know, and in their business to when they have their tire sale, you know, two times a year or whatever, and I'm just using them as an example. Do we really want to, you know, restrict those short-term things? I mean, I could see saying it can't be up forever or you can only limit it to, you know, two weeks, thirty days or whatever, but to remove that, you know, from all of our businesses is an option. I think that's a good anti-business, so I just wanted to share that perspective.
So I know when we were discussing it, those types of signs were, because they were animated, it was that motion that we were trying to avoid and be consistent so that you don't have, you know, the animation. I think there's a few telecommunications companies frequently use those types of signing. You know, it really didn't... When they had them out, they didn't really say anything. It was just kind of to attract your attention to the business.
Right, or the sale or whatever. And I can see that, but there hasn't any... I know it seems counterintuitive, but it hasn't, you know, been proven. In fact, it's been disproven that those things are causing, you know, unsafe and accidents. You know, so that's why I put something in place that is for a reason that maybe, you know, really doesn't exist.
And I think the previous way we attempted to govern that issue was around the limited circumstances, four times a year, two times a year. You know, I think what we're trying to avoid, we'll use QuickTrip as the example, because there's a ton of temporary signs associated with every QuickTrip store. And they're not always fixed to the ground and stuck in the ground. They're in the street, they're in the neighbor's property, you know, despite their best attempts to keep track of that stuff and, you know, every other business, I think, too. So I think the trouble is every day is gonna be an event to some of those businesses. So I think we're trying to, at least from the commission's discussion last time, is what's the compromise there? Is there a way for us to govern and allow those special circumstances? And then what are the limitations within that that are reasonable? As I read the code and remember our discussion, I don't believe we allowed for any of those circumstances to exist in this iteration of the previous code. I don't remember exactly frequency of events and the restrictions associated with that. Like, I'll pull it up, I can do that.
I think some of the challenges with that also are just the size of the department to be able to actually enforce it.
Administer a permit or request, yeah.
Like, we're gonna have a new Mexican restaurant and it's off the main, you know, street of Eighth. You think they might want something to attract people that it's a grand new opening of a restaurant? And so we're saying, no, but it's located, you know, away from the main street. So how would they know this word of mouth and so forth or in the paper? But that would be an opening that maybe they would want something to get their attention and then that's it, you know? Or Sherrill Tire for a certain sale. But I agree with what's said, you can't have it out there for a long time. I mean, we have banners across the road for you can put it up a week before the event and it has to be taken down three days after the event. And that, to me, seems to make sense. So if a person has an event and you can put it up, you know, seven days or six days prior to it and taken down three days after, you have limitation. And maybe twice a year or, you know, it might be a way of giving a timeline and the amount, and to monitor it. I don't think you're gonna have that many signs. I haven't seen too many. Sherrill Tire I've seen, but I haven't seen too many of those signs, you know, like that. So it's not that hard, in my mind, to monitor. Or maybe they have to get a permit, just like the banner that goes across the road, you know, so we know it's going up, but we go ahead and they know it has to be taken down three days after.
I think that's the issue. Joe talked about administering that permit request becomes a challenge.
Can't the city clerk do that?
Well, if you have five or six hundred businesses and what's determining what's the sale and how long? I mean, I, just personally speaking as a resident, I thought the new zoning code and I think this new sign code is to kind of clean things up. I think everything's gone. I think we haven't really enforced too much. And I think, you know, maybe after a time you decide, oh, gosh, you know, we made a mistake here, but I just think... I think those big flat things are very distracting. I mean, you're driving down and then you're like, you know, maybe I did get in an accident with it, but I certainly have noticed them and I don't notice them like, oh, that's, you know, it's distracting. But I guess it'd just be my personal opinion that, you know, I'll be sort of sale signs on that, that it either has to be kind of all or nothing. And if it is all, it's gonna be a nightmare to permit and to enforce. And I'd probably say that a lot of the signs that are out right now are not legal as it is, you know, the floppy. I don't know how that would even be allowed right now. And I think the people are putting up signs without getting signed permits, so...
Could I interject one more thing?
Sure.
Some of you may realize this, some of you may not, but there's about a thirty-month supply of commercial real estate for sale and for lease in our market, which means that based on the current absorption rate of those properties being sold and leased is, it would take thirty months to absorb the current inventory that's out there. That's how few commercial properties are being sold in our marketplace and are being leased in our marketplace. That being said, if we make things even more restrictive for our current property owners who represent a significant part of the tax revenue that this, you know, that is brought into the city, that's not a good thing. I mean, you want to be known as a community that invites, you know, businesses and has the comments like this gentleman from QuickTrip had is, you guys are really easy to deal with. You guys are, you know, you're inviting, you're cooperative, I enjoy working with you. But some of the things that are in this proposed ordinance, I think, are pretty onerous in terms of the handcuffs that you want to place on business owners. So I would just ask that you reconsider that, given our current climate, as opposed to Sue, what you brought up, you know, where we could try it and see if we get pushed back or we need to change it. But we're not in a position right now to where there's a lot of demand and it's just the opposite. We need to bring businesses in here.
Joe? I would like to mention, though, I think some of the... You can make a converse argument to that as well, is that part of the reason there's such a supply is that some of those commercial locations are surrounded by maybe other commercial locations that don't have curb appeal. And so because some of the sign codes and some of the ordinances are so loose that some of these businesses aren't attractive, so if someone is interested, they're looking at some of these areas and saying, yeah, this doesn't represent what I'd like to do. It's not nice and neat, it's not organized, it's very different maybe between one business and other. I mean, I think you can make the argument both ways. But I do think having some type of an organized sign code is better than what we have.
I agree.
Because that's... We get a lot of complaints just about aesthetically, how inconsistent things are, in some cases, you know, beauty's in the eye of the holder, but, you know, how unattractive certain areas may be. And, you know, I think tightening up a few of these things within reason is beneficial to the community as a whole. Perfect? Maybe not, but...
Thank you. And I think one other piece that I've read some research and I don't have it in front of me to cite it, but I'll just state it for the benefit of the conversation, and that is how much signage motivates someone to make a compelling decision, right? Or compelling someone to make a decision. If it's the dollar forty-nine breadsticks at QuickTrip, if you're hungry, you might make a compelling decision to buy. But generally, signs don't compel someone to make a, you know, and I don't want to speak in complete general terms, but anyway, there's some, you know, it's interesting to read the research around signage and the correlation it has to someone's buying choices or buying experiences, but certainly sensitive to the fact that bad signage can really make something unmarketable and prohibitive in terms of making it a productive business venture for somebody. And I think particularly in the sign ordinance that we've got here and the franchise or the corporate sort of folks that we work with, our sign code is very friendly, I think, in terms of meeting their needs. It's maybe some of the more creative, and I don't want to say creative, because I think our ordinance will allow a degree of creativity, maybe not the traditional sense of sign builders. You know, if you've been building signs for forty years and you've been putting signs forty feet in the air, you're gonna enter a new era here where aesthetics and standards are different, and I think that's gonna be a bit of a challenge, and a positive challenge for redevelopment of our existing properties in town, is a lot of the signage, as we all know, is yesterday's standard, nineteen-eighties or seventies standard. You know, the Zerflu, former Zerflu Plaza is a great example of one that the amount of signage for that strip mall is just, it's incredible. It's something, and it's probably forty, fifty feet in the air. I don't even know what the height of that sign is. So I think it's accomplishing a couple of measures, but at the same time promoting clear and concise regulations about what's allowed and not allowed. I think is something our form-based code allows in this case versus reading, just even as I was sitting here, our current code, which leaves a lot up to interpretation and creates a lot of gray area. So anyway, those would be just a couple of comments, I guess, as I think about signs. The tough part about signs is we know we're not gonna please absolutely everybody, but trying to accomplish and accommodate the feedback that's put to us is really important, I think, to consider. So, Joe, you were keeping a list of specific changes. Do we want to walk those again? And if there's consensus on any of them, knock them off? Or maybe that Joe was keeping a list?
So I only have one so far, from what I heard. I didn't hear any opposition. It was forty-six point one-five, period four B two to adjust that time from seven seconds to five seconds. That was one.
How do we feel about inflatable signs? Those, I mean, a lot of this has already been litigated in some format, at this level anyway, not litigated formally, but for our discussion purposes. Is there any desire to change what's currently proposed in the employable area? What else do you have?
Forty-six fifteen B four, I just struck dissolving and fading and then, because Joe made a good point about traveling and scrolling, maybe shouldn't be allowed. about traveling and scrolling, maybe shouldn't be allowed, but dissolving and fading as a form of transition.
That could be allowed, but some of the other animated, animated transitions maybe.
Correct.
Yeah, it could be worded to prohibit animated transitions. I don't.
And perhaps to be consistent with the conditional use that was approved, at least in one case, if not others, flashing, it already says, no, it shall not contain flashing or animated messages, but maybe something about flashing that gets to that public safety, the mimicking the public safety issue. So no traveling, scrolling or flashing.
Yeah.
Rapid flashing, and some of this is up to, up to discretion of the enforcing officer, but maybe that would be, Joe?
I mean, if you just changed that to, you know, there shall be no flashing, I mean, I, I think you would solve a lot of problems. You wouldn't have to make it, you know, tie it to, then it's red or white or, you know, something that kind of resemble emergency vehicles or any of that thing. If you just did no flashing, I think you would solve a lot of the negative influence or complaints that you've gotten from some of the signs that are out there, as opposed to going and getting in the distinction of, of, you know, traveling or fading or some of those other things.
Could I propose there shall be no animated or flashing transitions? Leave it at that?
And I'm not so sure, as I was thinking about it, if it's even the issue with transition, because you could have a message that flashes. It's not so much the transition that's flashing, right? So I'm wondering if even the word transition should be removed and, and Joe, repeat what you said without the word transition.
Then there, there shall be no animated or flashing.
Messages.
Messages?
Or, I guess it's an electronic message display, so everything is a message in some form.
I think, messages or transitions? Because there is two different things. You've got your message and then you've got the transition between messages. And if it's just a straight change from one to the next, well, there's no transition there. But, but you could have any number of graphical transitions. A fade is probably the most subtle. That's not animated and it's not flashing. You know, there's wipes, a dissolve might be another one that is not animated or flashing, but, you know, you can spin in, you could have a wipe in any direction, a swirl. I mean, there's a number of transitions that you could argue are animations. So if there's no animated or flashing messages or transitions?
I think it would be important to still prevent scrolling though, because you are going to read that for as long as it takes to get to the end of the message.
And the traveling component too, right? Travel in, travel out, depending on if there's a, right? If it's filling the screen and it takes five seconds to fill the screen.
Right.
You're going to want, your attention's going to be there for that entire period of time, to your point about scrolling.
So there should be no animated, scrolling or flashing messages or transitions?
Traveling, did you say traveling and scrolling?
Animated, scrolling or flashing.
We should have traveling in there, I think, too, as is with the current code or the current draft. Sue, did you have?
I mean, as long as understanding is that every message has to be up there for five seconds. And then what happens between the next message is the transition. So there's no, I mean, and I guess, so you're saying, so it's basically from one message to the next, it's a blank screen and then the next message?
Well, this would allow if you were going to have a fade. So, so you've got a photo or?
Well, the message is up there and then it goes away.
And the next one comes in.
And then the, the next one fades in and you're saying that transition would be considered a fading tran, a fading transition? And so you wouldn't?
So it's not animated?
Would, that would be okay.
The message isn't moving per se, right?
That would be okay then.
It's just, right, it's just.
But not the, the traveling?
Right, where, where one slides off and the next one slides in.
But the traveling message though, it does not comport with the five seconds. You have, your message is supposed to be up there for five seconds.
Correct.
So that's not allowed as it is.
Right.
To scroll along the bottom, which I think a lot of, a lot do, but your, your whole message is supposed to be on there for five seconds.
Right.
And so it's supposed to be going in and out.
And I see why they call it out a transition as the appearance, right? That's more prone to have the flashing message in there.
Right.
But your message could still be flashing and traveling potentially, and I think that's why.
The message has to be up there for five seconds, it can't be flashing.
But it doesn't say that. You're saying it's static for five seconds?
It should remain static for five seconds.
Before the next message appears.
Static means?
But let's.
Not flashing. I mean, that's what it's always, that's what the conditional use permits have said.
Right.
So, I mean, that's not.
I guess I didn't, I didn't interpret the static the way you were doing so. I was trying to accomplish both in the transition, but we don't need to do that. Sorry to become, accomplished in two.
So we, we wouldn't need the messages part with this, it would just be the transitions. There'd be no animated, traveling.
Scrolling or flashing.
Scrolling or flashing transitions, because it's already stated for the messages.
Oh, number three says, no part of the message shall give the appearance of movement.
So that, that would prevent scrolling.
Yeah, that already addressed my concern. I don't know why I was trying to.
But just so it's clear that the message and the transition.
It's had to circle it, that's why. Sure, yeah. Okay.
And then, I guess, just since I'm on a roll here, I'm comfortable striking parents seven under the same code, basically as long as they're compliant with the brightness of the light. I mean, they're, they're paying the electricity if they want to keep it on overnight. I don't really see a, you might discreed Joe, but.
Is there something to be said about business district consideration too?
Oh.
Want to put that?
That would be good, yeah.
If we're going to consider some expansion of the?
I think, I think that would be important to make that distinction.
Does the sign code?
With the exception of B1, is that it? I'd have to look at the districts, I don't know them well enough.
B2? Actually, the chart at the end has the districts, second to last page. B2. I'll be fine with having just D and B2.
B2. Yep. So B2 districts could have, if everybody had a sign and all the businesses are closed, they could run all night and that'd be okay.
Right. B5 allows also for electronic message displays, but I would imagine if it's mixed-use commercial in a B5, you wouldn't want them, if it's mixed-use, it's got to have some residential component to it, right? Am I understating that correctly? So I'm thinking we wouldn't not allow it there, same for institutional park and rec, same thing. But the general B2 commercial district would be?
Allowable.
So, so the suggestion is to preface 46.15B7 with, except for District B2, and then what's currently there?
Just an idea. I don't know how the commissioners feel about that. Quite an expansion, but at the same time, I want to make sure that these are not well, well, less and probably every zone district, which is just what we would talk about here.
Like, like the Las Vegas district.
Yeah, right.
And then the only other thing, and then I'll be done, I promise, is for canopies, I think we could strike vertical flap if it's already limited to 50%. I guess if they want to advertise the planes flying overhead, I mean, I guess I don't see a big deal. I mean, it's going to fade no matter where you put it eventually, just maybe sooner in one spot than another, so.
Unless there's a square footage that you would allow on the, on one face versus the other, that would be the other option. You know, if you've got no more than 50% on the vertical flap, maybe there's another percentage on the other flap, whatever we're calling it.
I think if you're going to allow it, allow it.
Yeah. It's going to be too hard to look after.
Yeah, unless they don't get the permit, right?
For awnings, um, where are awnings in our zoning programs? I'm just wondering what really restricted are on our numbers. Assuming they are out into the right of way, so, or something like that.
Can we just address awnings for the past year too? I don't think so. Let's see if there's something I can pull up quickly on awnings. I don't remember us talking about anything like this. Nor do I remember being talking about it in the zoning code you write either.
Not even like in the dis, the downtown district, like something about?
Maybe. Let's check the zoning out here. I will give ourselves a pat on the back while we're searching for this. This is the new zoning hub. I know you may not every day have a reason to go there, but in light of the community development director vacancy, I've had to reference it a lot and direct people to the, to the interactive map and it's pretty good. I mean, there's areas, there's some areas we're going to have to probably clean up, like all the ordinances over time, but I think by and large it was, it's a great thing to have. Answers a lot of questions of, can and can't do these areas instead of having to guess. But, so, absent that little commercial, did you find awnings anywhere? I'm trying to find.
I'm looking in D1 here to see what's, something.
Here we go. You type in there, you select the type of category and then you search. There's a little box that says, so, awning. See a definition in there. Awning, a sloped roof-like feature that projects beyond the face of an exterior wall, typically placed above a door or window to provide protection from the sun and precipitation. Awning can be constructed of various materials, metal, fabric or plastic, but awning may not be retractable or retractable so as to fall up against the building and not be used. See also canopy and marquee.
Under 11.06, offices generally, when a property owner intends to install, reconstruct or enlarge an awning canopy, marquee or similar feature that extends into a public right-of-way, the property owner must obtain written authorization, because it's in the right-of-way. So there's an assumption there.
That it is in the right-of-way?
That it may be.
Yeah, I don't know if they were, we were kind of requiring a certain look or, or something, a certain downtown area or?
Yeah, I can't find it in the B, was it B5 is downtown?
I don't, I don't think anyone would have a problem with the vertical flap thing. I, I mean, if they want to dispute or question the horizontal thing.
I think we're also making an assumption though, that the awning is cloth. It could be metal shingles, it could be a number of things. Satisfies the definition of an awning here. It's just need, it just needs to complement the architectural quality of the building. Oh, I'm sorry, there is, there is a definition here that specifies soft weather-treated canvas or vinyl materials are allowed, shingles, metal or the light are prohibited, so that is covered.
So the proposal was to eliminate the verage vertical flap? Is it, what I'm understanding is commission's discussion?
So remove the 46.17 paragraph four entirely?
No, we want to keep the 50% max on there.
Okay.
I think, right? We want to limit this amount of square footage that's, maybe vertical flap or?
So it will read the sign may not occupy more than 50% of the area of the awning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Give me any other ones? Any else? Special events? Do you want to open that can worms? I think the experience, and I don't want to completely paraphrase without personal experience, but I will make an assumption that most of the special events or the circumstances of which somebody would have pulled a permit from the community development office, they probably didn't do so. So it was an enforcement issue to go back to them. That would be my, in reading that, what I recall from the ordinance control reports, where there were complaints to the ordinance control department or officer about temporary signs and the flapping signs and anything else, that people were not heeding the guidance that was already put in place anyway. But that's just a point of reference maybe. Other thoughts, commissioners?
If I could, you know, throw out an idea, you know, for consideration and, you know, as long as you're doing this, you know, you want to make it long-lasting if you can, but going back to 46.15, paragraph 7, there was a lot of discussion about the wording and came up with a modification, no traveling, scrolling, animated or flashing. So it doesn't get into the interpretation, just throwing out an idea, but if the concern is something that isn't building, you know, and, and distracting the driver for a period of time where they're doing one of these because they want to see the end of it, what if it was just that we've got a, we've got a timeframe on the message that it has to be there for five seconds? Where does that start? Okay, so if it is something that's going to fade in, I would think that it starts from the beginning of that message, when it starts fading in to the end.
No, I would think that that's part of the transition. That the message is when it's fully there, so if you've got a one or two-second transition, that's, that's outside of the displayed message.
Okay, and, and that's where I was going with this, because of that potential interpretation of which is which and having to, to enforce it, you know, and people misinterpreting, you know, what it would be. You could eliminate the whole transition and scrolling and all those types of things, just say that any message has to be completed within three seconds. So the concern over something feeding in or something, you know, scrolling or whatever would all be eliminated, because if, if you, if you count it out, three seconds is a, is a reasonable period of time, you're not going to have one of these boom, 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 and then, you know, they're, they're distracted because they want to see the rest of it, or something coming up from the top or the bottom. If it has to happen in three seconds, it's, you know, it's rather consistent, it's rather smooth, the transition. Can eliminate, I think, a lot of wording by putting a, a, it has to be completed within this period of time and then it has to be there for that five seconds. Just an idea. And, and you could maybe do away with scrolling and all those other things and just have flashing and then put those parameters on it. So just a, a way of thinking outside the box.
In three seconds, so it'd be easy for me to run over a kid in a crosswalk if I'm reading a sign that's, that's, that is scrolling for three seconds versus glancing at it and the message isn't changing. So, you know, I can pay attention to what I'm doing, I see the sign, oh, you know, this So, you know, I can pay attention to what I'm doing, I see the sign, oh, you know, this is the realtor I wanna go visit. You know, versus, versus an animated, even if it's only for three seconds. It's still, you know, it's, you're focusing your attention on movement.
Yeah.
Okay?
I see where you're coming from though.
Right, I think, I mean, it basically said there's no transition between messages and I think by allowing certain transitions now, the fading and the, then you're, you're raising the question that JR had of, well, okay, what does that mean? And that's why it's like, well, no, you have a message for five seconds and there's no transition. You have a message for five seconds.
But it does soften, if you're driving and the message chan, say the picture or the message changes abruptly, you're, you're also gonna be more apt to, because it changed.
Well, then have a sec, you mean have a second between the messages then?
What I'm suggesting is that,
length transition.
Is that a fade transition is...
Well, then you're getting into the whole, well, what's building, what is it gonna say? And, and, I mean, I mean, I guess, any, it's gonna give the appearance of movement. I mean, you're gonna have to take out the appearance of movement in three if you're gonna allow any type of fading in, fading out. I mean, the way this is written, it's message for five seconds. Message for five seconds. No transition. And I guess it may have to...
Like the sign at the high school. Pretty much is up. Next one up, next one up.
I think that's a, to the quick trip on Lincoln Street example too, they're very much here, appear and gone, appear and gone. Without the flashiness associated with that. What was the statement, Joe, again? I didn't write it down, so I'm looking at my marked up version on that number. Learn about the transition again?
Um...
And then we're back there.
And, and so, what I had jotted down here, there shall be no animated, traveling, scrolling, or flashing transitions.
So, Sue's point?
So, there's no movement, right? I mean, if it says, open 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, fades out, comes back, hundreds of homes for sale. There's not, there, there's not movement there. It, it's, it's just not popping out bold. It's, it's fading in, fading out. And I, I mean, I, I don't think that in itself is, is distracting, as long as it's not...
It's not gonna be built like, chit, 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 chit. I mean, it has to be...
See, that would be an animation.
Have to be...
Right, it'd be a solid fade in, solid fade out.
So, that would be the only transition that would be allowed to be a fade.
Right.
Fading in, fading out. And how fast that happens, I guess.
Well, and if, if I had a sign and I had to keep something up for five seconds and I wanted to change the message every five seconds, rest assured, the transition's not gonna be born in a second or two. It's just gonna be...
Because that transition is counted in the five seconds. It's not, no.
That's the transition.
So, then everything you're doing up to that point doesn't count and then that's, then it's four, five seconds, the full message. Then as it's going away, that doesn't cover anything. And then as someone comes in, it doesn't cover anything. And then they start to five seconds.
Right.
Sit at the corner and start counting.
Stop, watch, no. Eyes on the roll. Hands on the wheel. Don't look at those signs. Nobody looks at signs anyways, no, just kidding. Just kidding. Okay, we wouldn't have spent all the time before we looked at signs. They wouldn't be important, right? But they are important. Okay. Other comments on the list? I don't have any other notes. I guess commissioners, are there areas outside of this that we should consider? I haven't heard any other feedback. All the persons, I haven't heard any other feedback either from anybody, so I don't know if there are any other particular areas that anybody wanted us to take a second look at. Madam Clerk, when you were watching the last council meeting for the second or third or fourth time on Friday night when I saw you here, what, were there any particular areas, I don't remember from the end of that meeting, if there was any specific concerns beyond what Scott's going through here?
Not that I remember.
Okay, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I figured maybe by the third or fourth time you would've.
Right.
They better look at this in the code, sign code. Okay. Commissioners, we could take action or recommend approval to the next council meeting if we wish?
I think we should.
Okay.
I can read what I've got if it's helpful.
I'm, I'm okay unless others wanna hear what you've got.
What was decided by the commission then on, on the inflatables? And whether or not that seemed to be needed to stop, not get up, and I don't know how that ended up.
There was no amendment as was discussed to that item.
So, any type of promotions like the Cheryl Tyer example that we talked about would no longer be allowed?
I wasn't the impression that we took it on an hour ago. Or is that not right? I guess what they're saying.
Those types of moving signs, yeah, I don't believe, I don't believe they are...
You're saying that they're an analog?
I, I thought that's what, I thought that's what she was saying.
I didn't think that they were, because they're kind of like...
What would they be called in the, I've got the codebook, I just don't have it.
Yeah, like wavy arm man?
You can have it in your front yard.
No, those are Flamin'...
Those are, oh, yeah. Long as they're not ever taken.
Santa Claus.
Good one, Santa Claus, right?
Right. Inflatables?
You're following the code?
They're prohibited.
Interesting.
Yeah, there was a provision for special event signs, only allowed in the B2. And those were limited to four events per year.
So, then they are allowed within special events?
If they're permitted. But, like I said, I don't believe there were, I don't have the count in front of me, but I don't believe that many, if any, pulled permits for their special events.
That would stay then, that they could be permitted?
No, that would be in the old code that would not be carried over into the new code.
Only from a, being an anti-business standpoint, I, I, I'd be better just to govern it than to throw it out and eliminate it. We don't use them, but...
Well, is it, I mean, if, you know, like if it comes to like property finance or something and, you know, it's spelled out, like when they spell out road closings and stuff like that, it could be permitted. Case by case basis, is there a way we, I mean, is it, shouldn't be that hard to maybe fit that in here? Or is that something?
Like a special event condition?
Right.
Conditional use. So, can you have the bouncy house at the, at the carnival? Is that a inflatable sign? Or inflatable object?
Well, no, that's not a sign. It wouldn't be a commercial. I think that would be a...
Very different.
I'm okay with allowing it for, you know, permits.
Yeah, with, with permit.
So, we don't have anything provided?
For a special event?
Yeah.
What is a special event? The tires are on sale? This week, next week, there's a better sale.
Well, they're limited though. Well, we don't have anything in here that would provide that limitation.
Well, it's the same as the payments over the streets. You have to be up a week before and three days, take it down three days after. Like the cross, cross country.
But I think what Sue's referring to is if they took out, there's not like a limited number of permits they can take out a year.
Yeah.
It's just saying, take it out a permit so they can come in this week, take it out, next week, skip a week, come back, take another one out and, and have it throughout the year.
Yeah, put a limit to it, yeah.
Put a max on it, yeah.
I mean, I guess the question, first question is, do we want these in our town? Right. I've got, if every business had used their four or whatever number of times a year on 8th Street, you'd have them conceivably along the corridor every day of the year.
Yeah.
So, there's that question I just posed that to the group. And then I think the other part of that question is, from an administrative or an oversight perspective, I, I'm sensitive to what JR said, I agree. You know, in some respects, if you disallow it, you're gonna have to enforce it. But if you allow it, we're still gonna have to enforce it to the extent of how do we, how do we provide for somebody's kind of following of the rules? And I, you know, in the old code, we expected them to come up with an annual permit with all dates and signs for the year. Again, I don't think that was ever done. And, you know, I don't know, I'm not sure if I hear businesses saying they wanna have the inflatable guy or the, you know, the, I think the times maybe have come and gone, but that's just, just me, and I haven't heard from folks to the contrary.
Well, if you take it away, you might hear...
But they're not, they're not like the age, right?
Yeah, right, they haven't been able to do it today. Unless they got the permit four times a year to be able to do it.
It doesn't affect us, but I think, you know, it's a, it's, you know, damn, being business friendly. You know, if you, if you limit to a number and they gotta pull a permit, then if they get it, it's down. I mean, because at least now, when you go to those businesses like the Cheryl Tyer, and they're a good business in our town. You know, it had, they've been a part of this community for a long, long time. They employ a lot of people, you know, and so I think it'd be nice to say, well, you know, we should've been enforcing this, but we weren't. But from now on, you gotta pull a permit, you can only do it four times a year, whatever the number is. As opposed to, oh, by the way, next tire sale for snow tires? You can't do that anymore, we're gonna enforce it.
What do they have, is there like a mission they have?
Yeah, they get that one or something.
So, it's not even really moving?
No. And the other one they do is they do an inflatable tire. You know, like this huge inflatable tire, doesn't move. I mean, those things aren't distracting drivers. They're getting people's attention that, oh, they've got a sale on this month. You know, and I'll go online and check it out, you know, or I'll pull in or whatever.
Commissioners, the potential language, if there's an amendment to any works?
Well, could we just add?
Except under special use four times a year.
And for what period? I'm just looking where we could, we would be able to put for that.
Special permitting.
I don't know if you, not allowed for a whole week, maybe just like four days coming weekend. Holiday weekend.
Are there other, so we're just talking about inflatable? Is that what I'm understanding? So, the definition is okay, I think.
So, am I hearing that static displays, static? 4.16, 46.15, 4B3? To add, except static displays permitted or by permit up to four times per year, up to five days per occurrence?
So, this would be in its own section, right? New, a new section?
Well, if, if 46.154B3.
15 is electronic.
Yeah.
So, I was suggesting creating another section, by the way, 4point, 46.2...
Well, it, it says, the following types of signs are specifically prohibited.
Yeah, that's...
Any sign on, on page six.
Oh.
On any sign not specifically allowed in this chapter. Vehicle signs, inflatable signs.
I think you, you meant 46...
46.13, not 15. Oh, I'm sorry, 46.13, I'm sorry. Correct.
Yeah, B3 there.
Yeah.
But that's listing the ones that are not allowed. So, I was suggesting that you pull that out and create its own category. Your general standard also already addresses oscillating, rotating, or moving in any other manner. So, it eliminates the, the flappy blow-up guy. But in the case of the blow-up inflatables, those would be compliant if you were to pull it out and put it, put it in its own category. So, I would probably suggest inserting another category before, 40, right after sidewalk signs can do inflatable. Does that make sense? Is there a size? I guess we...
Wouldn't it fall under 4623 then? Signs allowed with a permit in a non-residential zoning district.
Just add it there.
Just add it there.
That gets to that other...
Yeah.
Inflatable signs. What is the going fee for a permit?
So, this would allow signs though for... You know, because right, you know, it's an exemption then to the limitation on the size of signs.
Right now? Or would it have to comply with the total amount of square footage someone has for signs? I guess they're temporary and they're for five days or whatever date duration we allow.
Would you think most businesses are probably, you know, gonna be using their maximum square footage anyway? So, that to tie it to that is probably for a temporary sign is gonna be a, a non-issue? You know, there's not a lot of businesses that aren't already using everything, you know, for their, their display?
Well, that's the issue. The code would say, all right, you've had your allowance.
Right.
And you're capped, you can't do it then.
This is more of a, a four times a year temporary kind of a thing, right?
Perhaps, right.
I mean, if you decide to include it.
Mm-hmm, that's being discussed, right. And I guess I would, just like the, the electronic signs, I would suggest that we only allow them in the B2 if we wanna actually allow these things.
Yeah.
And exclude it from the other districts.
Wasn't that what 23 is saying? It's in a non-residential zoning district.
Well, we've got quite a few other non-residentials, so I think we just wanna specify that one. I don't know, Sue, is there a format in the practice that would, I think we wanna create its own section with some specificity?
Yeah, I mean, it's actually a device, it's not even really a sign. They're just making it clear that those devices are allowed. So, I guess, I'm thinking we might have its own, you know, ground, oning wall, window, sidewalk.
Yeah.
Inflatable devices and have a separate...
So, by permit, B2...
Right, 46215 or something like that, between 21 and 22 or... And then same vehicle devices.
Yeah.
Are allowed by permit in the other district.
Any maximum size?
Yeah, they should be eliminated in height for sure.
Not exceeding the height of the building.
But that would still.
This would be pretty tall.
Yeah.
Well, how high can a sign be now, if we just change that?
A sign can be.
20?
20? I think the maximum is 20 feet.
That seems to be a decent height, not to exceed 20 feet. I don't know what you wanna do for width.
For setbacks.
Definitely, yeah, off the, have the off the right way.
My packet's kinda cut off here, but I'm gonna be actually just looking at that chart again, that B2 column. How do you see the, you know, we'd only allow one. It almost seems like it could comply with that second to last column under B2, or second to last row in B2 in the column there. I don't know what is to the left though, so I can't see.
Ground signs, section 46.20, is that right here?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's a big part. To right, yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, I'm betting just a little bit then.
So something like, without renumbering everything else, 46.21 and a half. Inflatable signs or devices shall be allowed in B2 district by permit up to four times per year, displayed a maximum of five days per permit, not to exceed 20 feet in height, meeting all setback requirements.
So is that only five feet in a, in a B2?
Which probably restricts width though, too.
Looks like it.
Higher than the sign, but not less than five feet. And the middle in front, on the front. It's gotta really control their size, one two.
Is, is this part of the zoning ordinance that would have to get public hearing in the whole nine yards? 'Cause I, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if, if we should bring this back. Or, or do you think that we'd be able to get some decent language?
I don't, I think just with these minor changes, I don't think it has to go back to public hearing again.
Well, 'cause the sign ordinance isn't, isn't zoning, it's related to.
Right, oh, yeah, that's right, we were just, we weren't taking this through public hearing, that's right.
Right. I'm just wondering, you know, I mean, I think it'd be good to get the sign ordinance moving, but I, I'd hate to, you know, have, have a committee of us, myself included, that's not a professional, you know, we didn't involve our consultant. I, I just think it'd be good to, some of these other changes I think are fine, but I think it'd just be good to hear from them and make sure we're not creating any, you know, unintended consequences.
I'm a little uncomfortable with it, just because we were already asked the question and had already given consensus on the direction on it, and some by the consultants who would have then drafted the language that, you know, would, would provide for it. I guess it's the spirit of the commission to include it, and I just don't see or hear a lot of demand, but I'm not in the sign business and I'm, I'm not everywhere all the time, so I can't pretend to assume that, that they're not common or desired by businesses. Commissioners, I don't know, are you thinking about the language and the, so they have to pull a permit each time, is that what we're proposing?
Right.
Each permit would be valid for up to five days, if they displayed it for five days, or they displayed it one or, you know, 20 feet in height maximum.
I think the other issues related to standards are, the comp also would cover that particular use, so I feel good about that.
Okay.
Okay. The last question, and that was something that Scott and I talked about too, and that's related to, Adam had proposed this for discussion, and I don't know if we really felt comfortable where, with where it, where it is, and that's related, I mean, of course, we did make a recommendation to the council, and that was related to supplemental signage, and the fact that everyone needs to get a permit for supplemental signage. I think the spirit of it is, is appropriate and right, but does reality tell us differently, that people are gonna get a permit to be able to have their free speech and supplemental signage? Just ask the question again, because Scott and I talked about it last week, maybe your political signs, your free speech signs, your, anything else that's non-commercial?
From an administrative standpoint, I think that anytime you've got, you know, a complicated ordinance, part of educating the public is your staff's responsibility to, you know, demonstrate the ordinance, and that the, the permit portion of this is going to be, I, I really don't believe it's gonna result in the education that it's intended, I, I think it's just gonna be an administrative burden.
Yeah, so I guess a couple dozen occasions where people are, you know, people that have the large lot adjacent to them that's vacant, or have spaces for, for political or other signage, and it's not everywhere, but it's enough instances where I think it might become an issue, but previous discussion surrounded. Commissioners? Sure, seeing, anybody that's had a non-commercial district or non-residential, sorry, would have to pull a permit for a free speech sign.
But it's, it's a one-time permit, so if this year I wanna put up a sign for a candidate, next year I wanna put up a sign for a charitable event, as long as I'm the property owner, I don't have to get a second permit. If I don't get it right, someone's gotta talk to me anyway, I'm wondering what's the point of issuing the first permit? Other than educating that 24 feet is the maximum amount.
So just get, get rid of, of the permit requirement?
Well, that's a question to allow by right, where everyone would give whatever square footage, let's just say 24.
But it says signs allowed without a permit, oh, with a permit, okay, so these are the ones.
It's like two, two months ago, I questioned why someone, why we'd wanna make and pull a permit to have a free speech sign anyway, I didn't.
Right.
Just, the idea initially to me was a little, yeah, it was like, a little abrasive, you know? So I'm perfectly comfortable removing that requirement, me personally.
And administratively, you could require it without a fee too, but again, it's another.
Well, if, if, if all you have to do is apply for it one time, and you're using it for, as long as you own the business, it's too much of an administrative cost to even regulate that, just let it happen.
Well, then why, you know, why, I'm, I'm protected, you know, to exercise free speech, why do I need a permit, I'm not gonna pull one on principle. You know, I mean.
Well, in a commercial setting, though, you're not, I mean.
Well, so you can differentiate.
Well, you can require a permit in a commercial area for it. I mean, so, but you don't, we don't have to.
Yeah. I'm fine.
So you're allowed it, it's, I mean, it depends.
As long as it's not over 20 foot high.
Can't be there right away, I mean, that's the other issue, I think that's where the department was coming from, is wanting some recognition for regulations, that there are so, sign or zoning regulations that govern these things.
Since they're temporary, right?
Well, necessarily, in the new world around free speech, they could be permanent. That's the issue.
'Cause if you don't have a problem, why, why write it, you know? I was thinking if it's temporary, and then is later on if the problem surfaces, then you have to write one, but.
Yeah, in this world, they can leave them, people can leave them up forever. And that's the, yeah, it's non-commercial, that's something the key, is it's everything that's outside of the commercial space.
And neighbors might be upset about it and everything else.
Yeah. I, I certainly think we need to have limitations on size and those pieces. It's just a matter of.
Do you relocate it into 46.22, so it's by right, doesn't require a permit, and it's still listed?
I wouldn't say.
The rules still apply, if there's a violation, it gets addressed just like it would if you have a permit. You know, I, to me, the issue is that if, because it could be up for a short period of time, or it could come down and a different message go up, I don't know what the point of the permit really is.
Because the key with the Supreme Court pieces where you can't regulate duration, you can regulate quantity or area.
Right.
But you can't regulate duration, is that understood? Content, right, of course, content too. Just wanted to make sure I'm remembering that correctly. So I guess commissioners, would you prefer to move that out and not require a permit by the department for supplemental signage?
I wouldn't, me too. Move it, move it to 46.22.
Okay, so B probably C, do we decide? B would become C.
Yeah.
It looks like there's already a B. Okay, anything else before we take Joe's suggestion of advancing? I was just gonna look to you to make the motion, so that's what I.
Oh, I will, yeah.
Any other topics for discussion, staff, attorney, members of the public, anything else?
Thanks for looking.
It's worth our investment of time, I think, it's not that we're gonna anticipate everything, but we certainly can make a great effort to accommodate many of the situations that we anticipate.
Sure. So I'll move to adopt the chapter 46 sign ordinance with the following changes. 46.15, parent B, parent two, changing from seven seconds to five seconds. Changing 46.15, B4, to state, there shall be no, Joe, you wanna read that?
Yes.
Animated, traveling.
There should be no animated, traveling, scrolling, or flashing transitions.
Also eliminating, parents B7, that the electronic display shall be turned off for businesses in a B2 district. And also 46.17, parent four, striking the verbiage vertical flap. And then also no longer requiring a permit for supplemental signage in a commercial district, and moving that to the appropriate chapter, or subchapter.
Inflatables.
And also, thank you, creating a section to allow inflatables conditional upon a conditional use permit being granted to be done no more than four times per year, and each individual permit being no longer in duration of five days.
Should it be special exception instead of conditional use?
I think just a regular sign permit.
Just permit, yeah, by permit, okay.
Yes, and also adopting the height and other requirements for signage area pertaining to the inflatable. Am I getting anything?
That was it?
That's it.
We got a motion, a second, thank you, any further discussion on the table or off the table? JR?
Just a thought, would it be, make sense for you to talk to some, one of your businesses, some of you that are representing a district, where you've got businesses in your district, in terms of the timeframe for those inflatables? You know, whether, you know, five days, seven days, 10 days, whatever the number of days thing is, to get a sense for that? Just going that out as a, as a, an idea.
Thank you. Other feedback? Okay, the motion, a second on the floor, motion by Zerfle, second by Bry. To approve with those modifications, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any aye opposed? The ayes have it. Excellent, now the city council can give their crack at it. Entertained a motion to adjourn. That a motion by Zerfle.
Second.
Second by Tao, any concession, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, saying adjourn at 6:29.